Good evening, and welcome to the regular commission meeting for April 17th. Can we please call the road?
Commissioner Villavasquez?
Present.
Commissioner Burbank?
Here.
Commissioner Caldwell?
Here.
Commissioner Julie Lee?
Commissioner McCool?
Here.
Vice Mayor Bradford? Mayor Villa?
Here. So at this time, I'm going to call Commissioner Caldwell for his invocation.
Would you all bow your heads, please? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this amazing day. Started off with some rain and came out with sunshine. Let us do the same thing here tonight, but carry the sunshine from the beginning of this meeting right to the end. Brightness and love, carrying on the right way we should. Lord, we ask you for your help tonight. We invoke your presence here right now. We ask you to give unto our commissioners, our mayor, our vice mayor, our city staff, all that's here tonight. We ask you to give them insight and understanding and your wisdom to use it. Not man's wisdom, for man's greatest wisdom is his foolishness to you. It's your wisdom we seek after. So invoking your presence here right now, Lord, make everything go neat and orderly, and we'll give all the praise, all the glory, and all the thanksgiving to you, for we do this all in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yvette Merced.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you so much. May be seated. This time, we're going to move forward with the approval of minutes and agenda. Approval of minutes of the regular commission meeting of April 3rd, 2023, as presented.
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Merced, second by Commissioner McCool. Please vote.
Yes.
You have to vote. Five to zero. Right, there are no presentations or words or reports, so we're going to move on to public forum.
Okay, Robert M. Scheinberger?
Yes.
Okay, then Billy Fowler, then Marcy Mead.
The mayor, Avila, and the commissioners, I found out today, the golf course on El Cam is for sale. I have a little bit of knowledge. I do live on the golf course, and I'm a little bit concerned there's going to be a bulldozer behind my house here in the next couple of weeks, next couple of months, whatever you want to say the timeline is. There's a big difference between Volusia County and Seminole County. Seminole County, they control growth. Volusia County does not. If you got a plot of land over there, and you got the money in Volusia County, we'll let you break ground tomorrow, and we'll even take care of your permitting for you. Seminole County, no, 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 pump the brakes there. We got a spot for you, it's right over there, but we will let you know when you can break ground. I'm a little bit concerned here, because the first thing to go in this country, when there's a housing shortage, is the municipal golf course. I've seen it happen numerous times in the last year and a half. I feel, in my heart, after watching the trees being planted on Normandy by city employees, I feel you all could get about 10 or 15 people together, and you could hire them as city employees to run the golf course, if he sells it. I feel that Deltona needs to buy that golf course. I am aware that there is a chunk of land in the middle of that golf course that water has been piped in. It's all set up, ready for a high-rise. But many, many years ago, it was, no, we are not going to spend $250,000 on a ladder truck so you can have a high-rise. Not going to happen. So it never happened. But now, I have real estate agents in golf carts going by my house, checking out the golf course, looking at every different angle on where they could potentially do whatever they want to do. The developer has all the money. Can we all agree on that? It's pretty positive on that one. We don't have an airport. We really don't have a downtown area. The city has chose to build an industrial park on the backs of suburbia, Deltona High School, Halifax, right over there, everybody knows about it. Amazon's got that second building on the other side of Normandy. The city is growing, and Volusia County's growing way, way too fast. If you go over 472, and you take Kepler all the way to State Road 44, there are six brand-new neighborhoods. We're talking 1,500 homes, people. You got to control the growth. You got to control the growth. If I wake up in six months, and there's a bulldozer behind my house, there's a for-sale sign going in my front yard the next day, I'm out. Sorry. The muni golf, I don't know if anybody here plays golf.
No, I don't.
It's a recreation sport, but anyway, that's beside the point. The muni is the first thing to go when there's a housing shortage. It's plain and simple. It's golf. It's wasted real estate. It's, you know, that's the way people look at it. But it's also a recreation sport, and if I'm not mistaken, there is a wildlife preserve right there, and there's a wildlife preserve right across the street that borders the golf course. So if that, in fact, does happen, I'm a little concerned that you guys are going to sell out to the developer, and the golf course is going to go bye-bye. And that's why I came here tonight. The guy that owns that place, let's just say he's not a very good business owner. Let's just leave it at that. There's so much that could have been done to the golf course in the last five years that was not done, that people would come from...
Thank you, sir. Billy Fowler, please.
Can we ask, can you leave your information if the clerk doesn't have it? I mean, I know that you have that, okay. But I'll be reaching out, thank you.
Just please consider not letting that real estate go to a developer.
I wouldn't leave them nothing. Good afternoon. I'm here not to sum things up. We got one sitting over there with his glasses on his head, we had another one here with glasses on her head. Is that business? Y'all supposed to be businesspeople.
I'm not going to say that.
But I only see one person that is active to a dress, a business. Rest of them, you know, you come like, I come because I come out of attic, running late. But you should come with either shirt, and maybe a tie, not a coat, but don't come in here with a jumpsuit on, shorts, and your glasses on your head. And as I understand, my district commissioner, he didn't show up, not because I sent him that text that I go bring all this junk out, about me getting screwed for the last three years. I've been through a commissioner that was here for a short time while I was here, then we had a commissioner that, my commissioner beat in the race because he didn't run. But it's time that we furnish cell phones for all of y'all. No matter if I send you, take your glasses off your head. You know, business, business, not...
Mr. Fowler, can you please just keep your comments on me? I would really appreciate it.
Thank you. Well, keep my comment. That ain't comment, that is facts. Y'all remind me of the town that I built a little tiny home in before I moved to Florida. That they come in, they done, you know, town had a population 1,200. They run it so bad, they lost the border and sewer. Had to sell it to the city of Florence. So it's time that Deltona is saying they the biggest city in Volusia County, and won't grow more. Well, they can't keep up what they got now, so why have more? And it's time that when these houses being built by these developers and contractors be inspected right, a general contractor can come and do a roof, do the inspections, and then go to the code to get them to sign off. That's conflict of interest. But yet it's allowed. It shouldn't be, because I'm going to give you an example. I got a disc that I'd like to set up in here to show y'all and show the audience how roofs has been installed here in Deltona, Florida, and throughout Florida. So, yes, I don't want to call my contractor that done my work, like they say, you hired him. Well, you're right, I hired him. But then Charles called, the code's supposed to make sure he is licensed. But I understand that, because I'm a 44-year retired contractor out of South Carolina. I hear the word, well, South Carolina ain't Florida. I totally agree. But International Building Code, International Building Code, you can go higher, but you can't come under. So that's where Deltona got a problem. I looked at a roof today while I was up there helping the man. They put a roof on 15 years ago, and it rained today. And I looked up there at the dryer vents, and it was rotten. The contractor that done it put metal and stuff around it instead of replacing plywood. Now, should the codes done the inspections like they do, then that wouldn't have occurred. Or a person that owns his own house holds permit to put on a roof, they got to wait the codes get out there to do it. Why is the contractor any different? They say, well...
Thank you, sir. Marcy Mead, please. Marcy Mead.
Hi, my name is Marcy Mead, and I'm a volunteer at the Deltona Community Gardens. I want to take this opportunity to thank you for supporting the gardens. It has come to my attention that the garden is apparently a well-kept secret. I have encountered so many people who have told me they didn't know it existed. Anything that you can do to get the word out about the garden is greatly appreciated. To that end, the volunteers, and the garden is run by volunteers, at the garden have been working to give back to the community. We recently hosted a field trip for the students who attend the Exceptional Learning Institute, which is a private school for children with disabilities. The students had the opportunity to observe firsthand the beginning of the growing process and all the steps in between to harvesting. They observed at least a dozen different types of plants growing at various stages of development. The garden donated a bed to the school, and each child had the opportunity to actually plant seeds or starter plants. They planted pumpkins, zucchinis, strawberries, and celery. This weekend, I sent pictures to the school of the growing progress of their bed. Each child also learned how to plant a flower into a pot, and got to take the plant with them to hopefully nurture. It was truly a delight to see these young gardeners so engaged, interested, in learning about the growing process. We would love to have the opportunity to do more with the schools in Deltona. Deltona Community Gardens also recently sponsored a wildlife planting project in conjunction with the Master Beekeeper to promote the health and propagation of the bee population. Without bees, none of us eat. Our next project is planting fruit trees with the intent of making the fruits available to the community. We appreciate your support and are actively attempting to do all we can to give back to the community. Any effort you can make to help the garden continue to flourish, and to let the public know about it, and we are here to be of service, would be most helpful. Thank you for your time and attention.
Good evening, Kathy Bryan, Deltona. I've taken a couple of trips out to the Deltona Community Gardens, and it is a really neat place to go, so if you haven't got a chance to get out there, definitely do so. The last regular commission meeting, there was discussion about the development by the movie theaters with the apartments, and I know that you guys ended up denying that, which is good, but then there was a lot of discussion about how the developers brought restaurants in and whatnot. So just for grins and giggles, I sent out a Facebook survey, and I know there are people who will say, oh, that, what does that count for? Well, you know, statistically, not a lot, but it did give a lot of insight to the kind of things people are looking for. And a couple of things that I took away from that was, one, look for something, if you've got a developer who says, you know, okay, I'm going to bring in all this other business, talk to them about that business that they're going to bring in. Is it going to be more of what we have already? Or do we want to bring in stuff that Orange City doesn't have, that Deland doesn't have? And then maybe we'll have people from Deland and Orange City coming here to eat. I personally, I hardly go out to eat, so I really don't care. But since it was discussed, and since that was one of the things they brought up, I thought, let me just ask. And people asked for all kinds of stuff. A lot of it was the chain restaurants, but a lot of people asked for mom-and-pop type shops, too. And one of the best places to eat is a diner, that's not a chain-owned diner, that's a mom-and-pop run. Go get your breakfast in the morning, and stuff like that. So I just want to put that in your heads. When these developers come in, and they're talking about bringing this out and the other, look at what they're bringing in. We got three hamburger joints down there now. Big deal. And that people want, I realize, I understand, I guess you have the fast-food restaurants here first, and eventually the bigger ones will follow, but in any case, was Ms. Bradford here tonight? Okay, well, if she watches, then I will just tell her thank you for answering my question about the attorney, that's all I asked for. For the three who never answered me, it was probably money. And just be careful, because not everything you buy, and no offense, Marcia, but honestly, just because it's cheaper doesn't necessarily mean it's better. Marcia will prove herself. That's all I got to say. Thank you, have a good night.
Good evening, Dave Sosa. I've asked for the last couple of weeks now regarding the city manager's compensation package. I've not gotten a response yet. I'd like to know, how much are we putting into a personal retirement plan for Mr. Chisholm? So if one of you could answer, Jim, if you could answer tonight during your comments, I'd love to know what that percentage is. Two, I saw that we have another Amazon coming. I would like to know, what is the incentive package that was given to Amazon to open up across the street from where they're currently located? Three, I've noticed that the Fowler Law Firm did a lot of billing for Camp La Michi. If you could, Marcia, during your comments, if you could just bring me up to speed of what Camp La Michi is, and why we're putting so much money into legal fees for that? And second, another thing, status of Hickory Oaks. That went into a lawsuit about a year and a half ago, two years ago. I know we put aside $200,000 for legal defense for that, for the Fowler Law Firm. I'd like to know what's the status on the Hickory Oaks development, where the lawsuit is, as well as how much of that $200,000 has been funded towards the Fowler Law Firm? So Joyce, could I do a public records request from here to find out, breakdown on the $200,000 that was set aside for the Hickory Oaks lawsuit? Thank you. And who is our attorney right now? Is it still the Fowler Law Firm, or is it Marcia? And if it's Marcia, has she signed a contract yet? Because I can't find a signed contract. So is there a contract that's signed with Marcia? And is she through a firm, or is she on her own person? If those are some questions, you know, if you can get me the answers, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor, that closes public comments.
Thank you. This time, we're going to enter public hearing ordinance number 07-2023, repealing ordinance number 11-2018, Chapter 96 Improvements, Article 2 Design and Construction Standards of Improvement, Section 9634, Water and Sewer Subsection C, sewer facilities by creating a new subsection C7 relating to sewer connection, repealing new subsection C7 relating to sewer connections. City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a repeal of an ordinance that's not lawful according to the statutes of Florida, and we're just trying to clean up our ordinances as we go, and repeal of this will not have an adverse impact on the cities.
Do we have any public comment? Commissioner McCool?
I wanted to reiterate that statute. It's not in, well, it's in the body of the ordinance, but I just need you to, Mr. Chisholm, be a little more succinct, especially with those that don't have knowledge of how the ordinance is written at current, how it applies to new building construction, and us trying to, you know, improve, because I know that there was a big thing in Deltona about just saying no to forced sewer years ago, and that is an antiquated school of thought, given our new construction and the necessity to make sure that we have the most hygiene and safe principles for our community. So could you please touch on that for a moment for our community?
Yeah, just briefly, and I'll try just to be brief and direct to it. The state law, if an individual has access to a public sewer system, and they have a septic tank, and the septic tank fails, then they're obligated to connect to the public collection system at that point. And there's many ways that that can happen, but that's the law we're talking about. When we adopt an ordinance that says you're not required to connect to that public collection system, then that's in direct violation of what the state law requires. And all we're trying to do is repeal that section that deals with that particular issue.
Could you reiterate to the public what that state law says?
Let me see. Connect to a city sanitary sewer system, if available, shall be voluntary and not required for all existing residential customers with associated septic tanks to city's practice to support septic system repair when it is necessary or required, rather than the residential retrofit for a sewer connection. All existing land uses other than existing residential uses shall be required to connect to the city's sanitary sewer system if available. If grants through the federal government, state of Florida, or a combination thereof would become available for the extension of the city's sanitary sewer system and would assist residents in defraying the cost of residential retrofit for a sanitary sewer connection, then such opportunities would be made known and available to the city residents. The existence of such would not change the basic policy that connection to the city's sewer system for existing residential customers is voluntary.
Right, so be known now that most of our new development, or is all of our new developments connected to the sewer system. So if you live in a neighborhood that is currently septic-only, or has a septic neighborhood, then if your septic system fails, unless there is an available connection, then you would be required to meet the new standards for a septic system. If there are sewer connections, however, you will be required to hook up to the sewer connections.
That's right.
And that's pretty much what the law says, and this is clearing up and repealing some ambiguous language in the ordinance as it's written. So I just wanted that made clear to our public, so that they understood what we're doing, because again, there was such a big push back a few years ago to just say no to forced sewer, and we're long past that. So thank you for clarifying, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner McCool. Commissioner Villavasquez?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to make sure that we understand that no one is going to be forced to hook up to the sewer system. So I just want to make sure that I understood this correctly. If you build a new home, and there is a sewer close to you, you have to be hooked up to it.
That's correct.
If you have an existing home with septic, and there is sewer nearby, you will not be forced to go onto sewer. However, you will be offered the opportunity to hook up to sewer, and is it the city or the county or the state that will take up the funds or absorb the expense?
If it's, depends on where it's, if it's in the city, it would be the city, if the city has a program available. And, you know, as we discussed, there are locations within the city where we will have funds available for connection to the system.
So if you're near a sewer, you will be offered funds...
Yes.
...to be hooked up, even if you're an existing home, it will not come out of your pocket. If you turn it down, and something happens to your septic, then you will be responsible for the expenses of being hooked up to the sewer system.
That's right.
And of course, you will not be forced to hook up now, but if your septic goes wrong, you cannot replace it with another septic? Is that correct?
I think that's the position the state takes, is if they have a system that's functioning and is not in violation of state law, then they can continue to use it. If it fails, then, and there is a public system available, they would be requested to connect to that system.
And even if their septic goes wrong, they will not be able to replace it with the new septic that it's being talked about?
That's the way I understand it.
Right, so I just want to make sure that everybody understands that no one is going to be forced or pushed to go on sewer. It's only if you're nearby, the city will take the expenses, absorb the expenses of hooking you to sewer, if you choose to. If you don't choose to take up the offer, and going forward, something goes wrong, then the residents are responsible for the expenses on their own.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Do we have a motion? Can I get a motion?
Sure. I move to adopt ordinance number 07-2023 at first reading and to schedule second and final reading.
Motion by Commissioner Villavasquez. Motion by Commissioner Vila Vasquez, second by Commissioner McCool. Motion passes five to zero. This time, we're going to go ahead and move on to Section B, which is Resolution Number 2023-02, variance request to allow the development of a single-family dwelling on an existing 50-foot-wide lot with an area of 5,000-plus square feet within the R1 single-family zoning district located at 3602 Apple Orchard Drive. Mr. Joseph Ruiz?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, City Commission, respect the members of the public. Joe Ruiz, Plank Development Services. As read into the record by the mayor, this is a variance request via Resolution Number 2023-02, application number VAR22-0002. So just going into the variance request, the applicant has requested a variance to waive the minimum lot size requirements stipulated within Section 110-307, which is our R1 single-family zoning classification within the city's land development code. Just some background on the application, the location of the site is 3602 Apple Orchard Drive. The zoning district, as mentioned, is R1, so the applicant is requesting a waiver from some standards within the R1 zoning district. The size of the lot is .11 acres of an acre, or equivalent to about 5,000 square feet, which is about half the size of your typical Deltona, Deltona Lakes lot. The flood zone is X, so it is not currently within a flood-prone zone, and the plat for this property, which exists and still exists, or this property remains platted under the Cornell plat. So some background on the Cornell plat, this plat was, is an antiquated plat which was filed back in February 16th of 1925. The size of the lots range from about 25 by 100, so about 200 square feet, pardon the typo, and 55 by 155, so about 8,525 square feet. Upon that time, years passed, and so the Mackel Brothers came in and platted Deltona. When Deltona, or this unit of Deltona, Deltona Lakes plat, Unit 62, which surrounds this particular parcel, was platted on June 2nd, 1966. So based on just staff research, apparently this lot was not acquired by the Mackel Brothers during that plating time, and so it was excluded from the Deltona Lakes Unit 62 plat and remained under the Cornell plat as originally platted in 1925. So as mentioned, the typical Deltona Lakes plat, platted lot is about 10,000 square feet, and your corner lots are about 15,000 square feet. The exclusions, as you can see on the graphic that is before you, so this property, which is in red, and also there are a few out there, pardon the feedback, there are a few out there that are still kind of these original Cornell plat lots. In this case, we've got two that were, that remained outside, and there are two contiguous lots equalling that 5,000. So there still are a few out there that remain, not many, but a few. So some matters of consideration with the variance, so there, you know, there's a strict criteria for variance applications, and typically, when it comes to your consideration on the matter as far as voting, the question is, does it meet all five criteria? So the special conditions here, you know, do special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land and which are not applicable to other lands in the same zoning classification? Are there special conditions, circumstances that exist that do not result from the actions of the applicant? Literal interpretation of the provisions of this chapter, would that deprive the applicant of those things within that zoning district? Number four, the variance granted, is it the minimum variance that will make possible reasonable use of the land? And number five, the granting variance, is it in harmony and the general intent and purpose of the city's comp plan, as well as any codes in zoning districts that apply? So just some highlights for you all within this application. The staff did the review. The special conditions and circumstances are peculiar to the land due to the fact that the lot was platted back, these properties were platted back in 1925, and unfortunately, were not included within the Mackel Brothers Unit 62 plat. So as far as the existing property owner, these matters or these conditions on the property were not self-imposed. The site is currently zoned R1, which allows a single-family dwelling as a permitted principal use, which is what the applicant is trying to achieve, to build a home on the property. The proposed use is compatible with the future land use, which is low-density residential. The lot is, does not meet requirements of the R1 zoning classification or FLO, and that is due to the antiquated status of it. And the variance request is a minimal waiver from the code making it possible for the landowner to reasonably use their land. So just to kind of give you all a comparison, and I thank staff for their work on this and kind of giving you a side-by-side as far as what this lot looks like in comparison to the R1 requirements. So as you see on the graphic here, on this matrix, really, the waiver that is being requested within this application is for the lot size and the lot width. So due to the lot's width, it cannot achieve that typical, if I'm not mistaken, the 7,500-square-foot R1 requirement. So they only have 5,000 square feet, and, or sorry, there it is, 7,400 square feet, and then the 75-foot width is not be able to, is not able to be met because of the original nature of these lots. So as you can see here, the comparison, the applicant proposes to meet the 25-foot setback on the front, the 10-foot setback on the side. They plan to meet on one side the 6-foot setback, as well as exceeded on the west. They plan to comply with the height requirements, the lot coverage requirements, as well as the minimum floor area requirements established within R1. So here is a graphic of the proposal that the applicant is intending to accomplish on this property. So as you can see here, the applicant has put the envelope of the setbacks where it is and how it would be allocated on the property. Also, they're proposing the drainage to go towards the road, which would be a positive drainage in this sense in regards to the application at time of building permit. So at this time, the applicant obviously has not submitted an application for building permit as they are trying to achieve the variance request. So staff's recommendation today is that the city commission approve Resolution Number 2023-02, granting a variance to waive the minimum lot size requirements stipulated within the R1 single-family zoning classification for the property located at 3602 Apple Orchard Drive with the following conditions. A development of the single-family dwelling shall be consistent and comply with the minimum zoning requirements of the R1 zoning classification in the city's land development code excluding the minimum lot size and width requirements. Number two is in there, and I will explain. The proposed metal single-family residential building shall only be permitted in accordance with the requirements stated in Section 110-814I, metal buildings of the city's land development code. The applicant, within their plans, has shown a prototype of a metal house or a metal building. I just want to be clear to you all that the variance, if approved, does not approve a metal building, it just approves the building of the lot, or the building of a house on this lot. And working with the, or in asking and talking with the building official, if it's structurally engineered to meet building code and an engineer can sign off on it, then that's as far as the building code. But in staff's review of it and looking at the lot size, we've seen other builders take 50-foot-wide lots and build a normal house on that. So that is not an impossibility. That is also possible to happen if this variance were to be approved. Three, prior to construction of the proposed single-family residence, an application shall be submitted to the building department for review and approval. That is staff's recommendation, and any questions?
Commissioner McCool?
Thank you very much. Joe, they, the property is already purchased, right?
Yep.
I'm going to assume that the applicant has already invested money in these plans and, right?
That's a fair assumption, yeah. They've submitted that to us with this application.
Okay. So in looking at this development here, I want to make sure that, two things, that the actual house itself is in keeping with the character of the area. I don't have a problem with, I don't have a problem with building on this lot, but I do have a problem with aesthetically fitting in with the neighborhood, because this is what we talk about all the time, and staying in flow with the neighborhood. Is there, are there any public comments on this? There are public comments on this? Okay. So I'm going to withhold any more questioning until public comments are heard.
I have a question, Joe. Are they planning to build some type of a trailer on there specifically?
So from what I understand, what staff understands is there's a trend to build homes out of metal containers, per se?
Like a tiny home?
Kind of, except this one would actually meet the minimum requirements of the R1 zoning district, you know, the minimum 1,200 square feet.
Is it an actual container?
I am not, I'm not, I'm not 100%, but if it were to be, it'd have to be structurally engineered and meet the building code standards.
So let's go to public comment, and then we'll continue with some more of the questions from the commissioners. Okay, Ryan Lee Kidd, then John, I apologize, Fair, then Anthony, then Christopher Cable. Okay, Ryan Lee Kidd, please.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Lee Kidd, and I currently live at the property immediately behind this, 3603 Monument Drive is my address. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you, first of all. I'm a 40-year Deltona resident, I've been here a long time, and I've been in my current home for 20 years, and I've got a couple of concerns about this property being built on. First and foremost, there was a stormwater improvement system put in approximately 12 to 15 years ago, and it did an awesome job in the beginning, and I thank whoever put that in, because it saved us a lot. However, in recent developments, Hurricane Ian proved to us that we're not, you know, we're not able to get away from it completely. And even though this is going to be potentially designed for it to drain towards the street, my current property and my street on Monument is geographically put in a slope down towards Fort Smith. Also, Apple Orchard slopes down towards Fort Smith. That area did flood for several weeks after Ian. There were several homes that were impacted underwater, and I've not done the diligence to kind of fully, you know, include all the information regarding all those homes, but I do have concerns about that. You know, there are regulations put in place for a reason. You know, this lot is not large enough to be built on, and if we go against that, why do we even have these in place? It's very discouraging when we see an opportunity for someone to come in and go against the regulations that have already been put. And I am not completely against development, I'm smart enough to recognize that it is part of the future, and it's something that we have to adhere to. But part of why me and my neighbors have gravitated towards that area is because we do enjoy having the larger lots without someone immediately right on top of us. And even though that does meet the standards of going up to the lines 10 feet from the back, 6 feet from the sides, that's going to put their structure 10 foot from my property line, and I just have some concerns about that. You know, that's, you know, part of my privacy, and I would like to challenge you guys to think if something was being built right on top of you guys, you know, it's just not something that is conducive to our neighborhood, as Commissioner McCool has stated. You know, it's also been, I'd like to point out that our zoning and planning board did vote six to one last month against approving this variance. So, you know, with that being said, I'd like to appeal to you to not allow this variance to happen. We're getting a lot of development in Deltona, and I know there's a lot of concerns about that either way. So I've seen a lot of growth in my 40 years here, and I think Deltona's done a pretty good job overall, and I appreciate that. I'm one to never complain about a job I really don't want to do, and I know it's very, very difficult, you know, in your decision-making. But on this matter, I think that it's not quite appropriate. I do feel bad for the people that have purchased this property without being diligent. They're not going to know that it can't be built on, you know, without doing their diligence of finding and standing before, you know, city regulations. There has been, to my understanding, opportunity for neighbors of mine to purchase the property in the past, and that's just not been available, and that's not happened. And it's probably something that we may be able to purchase from them if that's something that the variance isn't approved to be built on. And I also have concerns about the actual structure. You know, I have concerns about it flooding into my yard, as I stated. So, you know, it's one of those things, it's really a tough call, and I, you know, understand the position that you guys have. But as the residents there, it's not going to fit in our neighborhood, no matter what kind of architectural design. All of the homes have been built 20 to 30 years plus. Any new architecture is not going to fit. The front of the house is going to stick out. My neighbors on Apple Orchard are probably going to be more concerned about that than I am. I'm concerned about flooding and what it's going to do to continuously impact our area. So thank you so much for your time.
John Fair?
My name is John Fair. I live kind of southwest of where this lot is, across the street on the corner. My lot's currently 125 by about 147. This lot here is 50 by 100, 5,000 square foot. A typical sewage or septic tank is 1,500 to 2,000 square feet. So where's that going to go? I don't, this property was bought from an auction. The people that lived across the street from it, or next door to it, used to own it before they got divorced. So this was split off of their property. So I said, I object to this, especially being a metal building. I mean, that's a Connex. I got Connexes all over my job sites. It's just a metal building. It's not, and it's not a house, it's not something that we want. I mean, I can't understand why we're going to break the law. Where are we going to stop? The code is 7,400, so now we're going to 5, so the next one's going to be 45, 4,000? There's got to be a point. I mean, I really object to this house being put on this property. That's all I have to say.
Anthony Leedy, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My property, if you're facing, the property in question is directly to the right. I heard that it was about .11 of an acre. My house, I believe, is like .45. I have almost a half acre. And going on with the, with the water runoff, there's no way that that, because if, I don't know if any of y'all have been there, I know our councilman, unfortunately, he's not here. But that property sits where my fence is, about three feet away from it, it's about two feet higher. So any water runoff is going to not go to the street, it's going to go back, and it's going to come into my property. Right along my fence, I have my camper parked back there, and between the camper and the house, I already have a flooding problem when it rains. So if that water runs off that roof instead of absorbing into the ground and then comes down into my yard, that's going to create a problem for me. Another issue I have is lot sizes like that are typically in homeowners' associations like gated communities and such. I purposely bought in this area, you know, 10 years ago, because I didn't want to be in an HOA, because lot sizes are bigger, and you don't have a neighbor sitting right on top of you. And I'm not sure what this, what this building is. I've heard other builders call these things metal buildings, like a thin tin or something like that, so I don't know what they're going to actually build this house out of. Another thing, too, this might not mean nothing to a lot of people, it's not really too much to me, but it's something of concern. When it comes to gopher tortoises in the state of Florida, they're an endangered species. There is a gopher tortoise that resides on that property because it comes in my yard, in my front yard. I see it at least once every week, maybe twice a week, and I've watched that gopher tortoise. Every time he leaves my property, he goes to my fence, and then he goes to the right towards that property, and his den's somewhere in that, in that wooded lot. So if you were to approve this, they're going to have to get somebody to come in there and trap that gopher tortoise and get him out of there before they should be able to build on it. And another thing, too, like John said, the septic, if you look at that picture, there's such a small area for a drain field to go and for a septic tank to go. There is no city sewer hookup on our street, on Apple Orchard. Let me see, what else I got here? Oh, as far as the property goes, that property went up for auction, and I'm not going to lie to you, I tried to buy it, but unfortunately, I was out with a serious injury, and I bid on it, but I got outbid by a used car salesman in Daytona. I forgot his name, I spoke to him a few times. He originally listed that property as buildable, and it was used in my address. So that's the reason why I contacted him, and I said, hey, I don't want my address on there, it's not my property, people are coming to my house inquiring about this property. So he did pull it down off Zillow. So he did pull it down off Zillow, and then got it its own, you know, address, and listed it back up. And at the first time I talked to him, I told him I came to the city specifically before I looked to, to purchase the property, to see if it was in fact a buildable lot or not. I was told no by the building department here, and I also went to the tax collector's office in Volusia County downtown Deland, and I had asked them down there, and they told me it was not a buildable lot. So I don't know why we want to change, you know, code just to allow this, you know, house to be built. I'm just, I'm against it, and I don't think it's going to fit in with the neighborhood, and I appreciate y'all's time.
Christopher Cable, please.
I happen to live directly across the street at 536 Ferdinand from this property. I think everybody's touched on most important points. First off, the lot is probably half the size, I think that was conveyed earlier, half the size of all the other lots, or smaller than half the size. If you look at the drawing that they put up, this building is going to be 6 foot from the property fence on both sides already. So basically, you've got a 6-foot alley between the house and the property next to you. I know when I moved into that neighborhood in 1994, I moved in with the knowledge that I had a minimum, my neighbor had a minimum, and all the lots had a minimum, so I felt comfortable building there. At the time, I probably overbuilt the neighborhood, but I can tell you, at that time, it was 1,200 square feet. We have 1,200 square feet now, but it's, it's a metal building. I have one metal building in a six-block area, and it's a storage garage. We're going to put a house, a metal building house across the street from my home. I mean, that doesn't seem, I'm, I'm sure you wouldn't want that, across the street from your house. And the nice drawing they put up, it didn't show the septic field. I mean, you have a 25 by 25-foot bare area is what you're going to put your septic tank in and your septic field. It won't, I don't believe it would meet code requirements. I definitely feel sorry for the owner for purchasing the property, but if you have a lot one block away and it's going for $35,000 to $50,000, why would you think you got the deal of the century for a lot for $13,000? I mean, some things are too good to be true, and, and I feel sorry for ever bought it, but it's, they didn't do their due diligence, and, and we shouldn't have to, the neighborhood shouldn't have to suffer with a property and a, and a home that's not in harmony with the neighborhood. I think it's quite apparent, it doesn't match, you've got the aerial view, you can see the houses, you can see the lots, it does not match the neighborhood, and I hope you make a decision to deny the variance. I think the building department and the zoning department already made that decision, made a decision on it. Thank you very much for your time.
Mayor, that closes public comments.
Okay. So Commissioner McCool?
Yeah, okay, I have a couple of questions. First of all, one of the pressing thing, and I would like to ask you first, and then back up from Public Works, if, if you can't answer. Flooding in this area, I believe the neighbors, when they say that there is an issue there, and especially unforeseeable in, in a lot like this, right, that is wooded, do you know if there are problematic issues before with flooding in this area?
I would have to defer to Public Works, I'm not sure.
Or just the general area, I want to know, in, in looking at the area here.
Phyllis Wallace, Public Works. Certainly during Hurricane Ian and Nicole, we experienced unprecedented flooding in that area. I am unaware of any habitual flooding out there during a normal rainy season, but smaller lots mean more impervious area on a lot.
Exactly, exactly. Okay, Joe, I need to ask you this. Septic is a concern of mine, a very big concern of mine, because if you take and you put a building on this area, you're going to take up a permeable area, first of all, and compacting water onto this area, I have concerns about septic. Has this been explored with Volusia County, or can you tell me about the septic in this area? Because they have a very good point with this.
Yeah, so, just, the applicant is here, by the way, he has, he's requested to speak. As far as the septic portion of it, they would, with the building permit, they would have to go through Volusia County Health Department. So the, the variance in itself does not guarantee any building permit or Volusia County Health Department approval.
Right, but here's what I'm getting to, okay? And giving somebody a variance before we even know if these things are happening, like, I'm not comfortable with that, because now you're setting a precedence for which the outcome is not guaranteed. And we don't do that, because we rarely give out variances, because we try to follow our code, okay? Couple of things here. First of all, I myself feel bad for the applicant, I want to know myself, for my own edification, and for them, if this property was marketed as buildable, because that sounds scrupulous, first of all, and if, I, I don't have a hard time believing the one neighbor saying that he checked with building before when they were talking about purchasing this, and was told that it wasn't buildable, so I have a problem with that. So I need to know, was this property marketed at auction as buildable?
I would defer to the applicant.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having me. I can answer the question for the septic, if you wish. When we-
What's your name for the-
My mother-in-law is the, I'm sorry.
For the record, your name?
Ale Patrana. Thank you. So when my mother-in-law purchased this property, it was, it was already with a non-conforming letter, and it was, it was being through a title company. They did a search, and basically, we have everything on hand. And if anybody contacted, there's people trying to acquire this property for, for purchase, they would have known that. So that's something that happens. When we came to the, to the building department to, to apply for the permit, that's when we find out that, that Mr. Ron, they wanted, they wanted to, to talk to the title company about this search, because it was conflicting. So when they found out that somebody owned this property, it makes it non, it was not, it was a non-conforming lot, but at that point, if, if somebody owns the property in the past, it's not going to be, it's not going to be, like I said, to, to, to a building. So that's the reason why we had to come to a variance right here. So type X soon, it's marked by FEMA. Type X means there's no flooding in that area. So there's no problem with flooding on that. And the building that we, that we are proposing is not going to be metal anymore. It's, it's going to be a block, a block structure, you know? We did conforming with the, with the size, and it's basically, you know, proportional to the area. That was, we're leaving space for the septic system. Now, this new septic system, like advanced treatment, which allows in a small section, it doesn't require to have a big section of land for you to be able to use the systems, you know? It costs a lot of money. It goes from $5,000 to $20,000, you know what I mean? But the thing is right here, that we, when, when we, when we did the search for the lot, it was marked R1. When you see in the records of the city that it is marked as R1, it should have been like a mark differently, that would be, people doesn't come to buy it, that way they can keep it away from, from making plans, you know? Because we already spent a lot of money. We did the survey, we did the plans twice already, we paid for engineering. We even though have a contract with the septic system company, the only reason that they, they didn't went through the, the process is because we didn't have a number for the lot. So we went through sunning, and we, we acquired that lot, that number. Now it's 3602, so it's, it's in the records, you know? So it will comply with, we have engineer that will be working with this, that we made this possible. It's not that they're just going to, it's going to have to do to the process with the building department for them to be able to approve. If they see something that will be, that will affect any neighbors on anything in the future, you know what I mean, it will be subject to rejection or to, to be, for to be able to, to, to address those issues and bring it to, to compliance, you know?
And thank you, okay, thank you for that. And, and I'm speaking to Joe, I'm speaking to the city manager, I'm speaking to our legal department. The fundamental problem I have here are legal issues at hand. First of all, it's zoned R1 as a non-conforming lot, so any passerby that see it, you can't actually say they didn't do their due diligence. If it says that it's R1, then you've automatically assumed that it's buildable. Of course, there is, yes, more due diligence that goes into buying a property, but if this was labeled incorrectly or marketed a certain way, then I have, I have a problem with that, and I need to understand the, the legal history and the impact of whichever way we vote, you know what I mean? Before I can, because you go back and it says, we're, the city of Deltona is making an admission, or we're looking at the plat excluded from the subject property and many other lots remaining with the Cornell plat. I don't know whose responsibility that is, that this is supposed to be platted properly. This is planning and, you know what I mean? This is above my pay grade, but I have problems making a decision, because for me, it's, you know, we preach in this city our comprehensive plan, compact infill design. However, we also grant our property owners rights that when there's an expectation that they bought their property and they built on this property, and there are lot sizes, that they would enjoy the comfort of their lot sizes for the length of time that they owned their home. So in trying to protect both people, I need to understand what the legality of this is before I can make a decision. You've obviously invested, right? But I need to understand that. I mean, I, I, at this juncture, need input from, I know what's being said, but I also know where there are missteps here from the, their, the marketing, whoever marketed this property, however it is listed, I need to understand that.
I think our, our position is it's a non-conforming lot, and being a non-conforming lot, there are certain steps you have to go through to be able to use that lot, and you're in the process of doing that. It's gone to the planning board, it, the planning board recognized the non-conformity, and, and decided that it was not one they would recommend going forward with. You've got that basic decision. As far as legal issues about how it's marketed to these people, that's an issue that-
That's civil, I understand that, yeah.
They're going to have to take that up with their realtor and whoever they bought it from, to see how it impacts them. I don't think it's an issue of the city.
Okay, so there, we don't have a problem with the way that it was platted, correct? Or excluded from the plat, no?
Yeah, as far as the way that it was platted back in, in 1960s, or excluded from that plat, staff, if, if there's no unified ownership and things like that, you know, we cannot speak for what an owner does or does not do in regards to subdivisions, so it's, it's hard to know what exactly the history is on that as to why it was excluded, but based on, you know, based on just property rights, as mentioned, also, you know, you can't obligate someone to plat or join in on a plat, for example, when the Mackel brothers platted this unit 62.
And this was owned previously by an adjoining landowner, if I'm understanding that correct?
I believe so.
Okay. I, I just have, I, you know, if, if I were the applicant's friend, I would say, go get an attorney for, for this, but for me, in conformity with the city, we've said it's a non-conforming lot, you know what I mean? And, and I would have to vote no. It hurts my heart to do so, but in keeping the uniform, you know, compatibility with the neighborhood, you look, as, as far as you can zoom out on the aerial photo, and look, the, the majority of these lots are, are, are large. A lot of them are tree, there's a lot of vegetation there, I mean, some of them are not, but there are pools in these homes, and, you know, I just, I have fundamental issue with, we talk about character of the area, and it's really important, and my job is to serve the many, you know what I mean, the needs of the many, and so I would have to vote no on this.
Thank you, Commissioner McCool. Commissioner Villa Vasquez, and Commissioner Burbank, and then I have a few questions left.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question, Joe. So, first of all, the, the property was advertised as R1, doesn't necessarily mean that that's what the city said it was, right? It was, however it was advertised by the sellers.
Correct. The advertising, we have no control over. What I can affirm or confirm is that the property is zoned R1.
Right. So my other question is regarding the septic, at what point does the county approve a septic for a new, not, a new single home?
So typically, it's, and Phyllis, correct me if I, if I may speak.
Is it by the information that you give us, like 1,200, or is it after the fact?
Well, yeah, they've got to provide the square footages and, you know, bedrooms, the bathroom facilities to the health department as far as their design, so the health department can determine whether that septic tank is adequate to, and suitable for, that they propose is suitable for the home.
And so it can be approved before the building takes place?
I'm not quite sure how that works. I know they kind of go hand in hand with the, during the building permit process, they've got to have that septic, health department approval prior to getting issuance of a permit.
Okay, I'm just wondering, is, is there a one-size septic, or is there different size depending on the house? Because I'm just concerned about the size of the lot, and what I'm listening to where that septic tank is going to be, usually it's supposed to be in the front, am I correct? Because you don't have room on the sides.
Yes, standards.
Or in the back, so that's my question.
Standards have changed, yeah, and that's out of my expertise, thank, thank you, Phyllis.
Not my area of expertise either. Phyllis Wallace, Public Works. Typically, what would happen is the applicant would be working with the health department at the same time they're going through their process of getting a permit from the city.
Ms. Wallace, give me a minute, sir. The conversation needs to be lowered, thank you.
They would take their survey and their plot plan, along with the size of the house, the number of bedrooms, the number of bathrooms, to the health department. They will look at it, they will make a determination of the appropriate size, both for the drain field and the tank. They'll look at the, the land, they'll also be requiring a perk test to determine where it would be set on the property, so that you have proper percolation with the drain field. So that does drive where that system will go. So the property does get smaller and smaller, if you will, when you start adding all these other improvements that are necessary for a, you know, a home to be built.
Thank you, Phyllis. And in this case, I don't think there's any other place but the front, according to, I'm looking at the, you know, the measurement and what's left of the plot after the, the house is built.
The front door, the back, you know, depending upon, you know, where there are most open spaces left.
That's it for me, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burbank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
One moment, Commissioner.
I just wanted to throw something, then. The other thing is, when they're going to apply for the septic tank and the drain field, they would have to put on a drawing where that's going to be located. So the health department would go out and do the perk test for the drain field itself and the septic tank, and that would have to be spotted on some type of a drawing.
Thank you. Commissioner Burbank, please.
Thank you, sir. My question would be for the planning director. Hi, Mr. Ruiz. It's not defined in the code of board, and it's, because I looked it up, maximum lot coverage, is that just the house, or is that the house plus the concrete, plus the driveways, plus the, any sidewalks, plus any sheds, plus anything, or is it just the house that's under the air?
So the lot coverage is for the house under the air?
But it does, so it does not include the driveways or anything like that?
No.
It says 35%. That's the biggest the house can be, but everything else, so literally, so you could conceivably, then, is there a maximum?
I believe the impervious surface area, which would, would then calculate the driveways, I believe is 65% on a-
Okay, there's, that's all I had, thank you.
So I was looking at some of the conceptual artwork for the home, and I believe this looks like those homes that, when we were discussing about a solution for affordable housing, the tiny homes that are made from the, I forgot what they're called, but the, the metal rectangles, right? That, that obviously doesn't fit in with the style of, of that area, that's number one. Number two, for this infill lot, is there, is there an elevation, or are they going to build up a little bit? Usually, that's what they do when they do an infill, they add some sand to make sure the house stays a little bit higher than normal. Are they planning to do that on this specific project as well?
During the building permit process, there is grading of the lot as far as where the pad will go, the, the pad for the foundation. Typically, our, our standard is a foot above the crown of the road.
So essentially, if the- So essentially, if the neighbors didn't flood in the past, they could potentially flood in the future?
That, I would have to, I cannot confirm that.
Okay.
That'd be the case.
You want to be brave enough to give me a maybe or a yes right now? I'm just trying to get a feel for what the, you know, what could potentially happen if we vote on something that could hurt the other residents?
Certainly, smaller lots have less pervious space, which means your grading has to be spot on. Your finished floor elevation has to be complementary with what is existing to the left, to the right, to the rear, so that you're not adversely impacting somebody. If it's a two-story home, you would have to put on gutters and direct that to convey the stormwater based on the grading, whether it's an A, B, or a C lock grading. So anything is possible, both for the flooding, and then anything is possible if everything goes according to plans.
And then on top of that, it also gets affected by the driveway, how much green space is removed from that area? That all, obviously, because the water has nowhere to go?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Wallace and Mr. Ruiz. Marsha, as far as property rights go, right? This, obviously, this doesn't really go with our comp plan. Are we violating the rights if we don't approve this?
No.
I always like to ask that question.
It's not buildable without a variance.
Okay. So, Joe, and this is just my opinion, right? I believe there's a place for that, for those type of homes, right? And that's something, obviously, our city manager is gonna have to kind of look into or whatever. But I just, looking at the aerial views of the property, looking at the conceptual art, I just, it doesn't fit with the area, right? It's not that we're bullying the homeowner, you know? I feel really bad for him. And I actually would tell you to probably seek an attorney to go at those title companies. But I think, I see no more speakers on here, and I, I'm gonna entertain a motion at this time because I can't make them, so...
Can I read the resolution, please?
Please, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Resolution number 2023-02. A resolution of the City of Deltona, Florida granting a variance to permit the development of a single-family dwelling on an existing 50-foot-wide lot with an area of 5,000 square feet within the R1 single-family zoning district located at 3602 Apple Orchard Drive within the City of Deltona, providing for conditions, conflict severability, and an effective date.
Can I get a motion? No?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the City Commission deny variance for resolution number 2023-02 on the grounds that it does not fit in with the rest of the neighborhood, and there are flooding concerns.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Vila Vasquez. Okay, so the second is actually by Commissioner Caldwell. City clerk, can we please vote?
Need to make sure the motion is...
So the motion that I'm reading on here?
To deny.
Okay, because it says to allow. Got it. Yes, to deny, correct. The motion to deny passes 5 to 0. This time, we're gonna move to comments on consent agenda list. Do we have any public comments for consent agenda?
No, Mayor.
All right. At this moment, we're gonna move for consent agenda items, and I'm looking for a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to, hold on a second, where am I? I make a motion to approve a consent agenda A, B, C, D, E, and F.
So we have a motion to approve agendas, consent agenda items A through F. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Burbank. City clerk, can we please vote? Motion passes 5 to 0. This time...
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but my button wouldn't push to speak. Okay, the motion is passed, but I just wanted it, I, there's nothing here that I don't agree with, but I would like the city manager to follow up with the public on the agreement for the infrastructure, because I know there was a lot brought up about, in his comments, closing comments perhaps, because there was a lot about nothing being done during the moratorium. This directly affects the moratorium. And I would like for him to speak to that during city manager comments, because I've talked to him about this, and so I just want that to be public.
Mr. Chisholm, when the time comes, if you could please... Okay. So at this time, we're gonna move to city commission special reports and requests, and I will start with Commissioner Burbank. This is for special requests.
I am good. Thank you.
Commissioner Vila Vasquez?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I spoke to the city manager. As we know, Sheriff Chitwood is our state representative that we nominated to represent us on the opium. And I requested from them during their comp stat meeting if they would have a town hall meeting here with our residents to speak on opium and also on how you can use Narcam to save somebody's life, and just to speak about it. And so they agree on doing that. So I would just like to have the city manager touch up with Sheriff Chitwood and see when that can be arranged.
I'll do that.
Thank you.
Commissioner McCool?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you again all for the city manager's report. Oh, wait, this isn't, is this comment or special? I'm so sorry.
This is special request.
Yeah, special request. I wanted to thank the city manager and staff, especially PIO staff, that they have already begun to put together a distracted driving campaign for the City of Deltona. As you know, we had a tragic death a couple of weeks ago in our city due to a distracted driver, and we've had many more, and we see it all the time. So they are starting to work on that. We will be making a big push for this in the City of Deltona, enlisting the help. So this, I just want you to know that the request has been followed through with, and this is to be forthcoming. And I don't know whether to talk about that, for my comments, or...
Yeah, you can leave that for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
That's fine. Commissioner Caldwell? None? All right. I do have a special request, Mr. Chisholm. And I'm only asking this because I know when I kind of get out of line, I'm told very, very firmly. Are we, are we, as a commission, putting somebody in charge of cleaning the school, the Little Red Schoolhouse? Are we instructing somebody to clean VSAP? I'm getting continuous emails and calls of members from VSAP complaining that one sitting commissioner is going in their areas and cleaning up without their permission. They're actually, as we speak, having a meeting regarding this situation, and I have much more important things, not that they're not important, but to worry about than to be babysitting another commissioner. And have you spoken to the said commissioner to stop doing this?
It's by my understanding, right now, the staff is completing the Little Red Schoolhouse inventory and the cleaning up of that particular property. Commissioner Burbank did go through there and pull a lot of material out that was, you know, I don't think it had much value. As far as the Veterans Park facility, he went to that group that was in charge of that building and got permission to go in and to sort through things and clean it up from them. It's not our material. We own the building, but they actually had had use of it and control of the contents. And I think he went through them to do that. But we have had discussions and actually a memorandum saying that if anything's moved out of any of our facilities, it has to go through the process or the clerk's office where we inventory and take proper note or disposal of those materials.
Perfect. I just want our veterans to not feel like they're kind of being beat up on, because I got an email, very upset, that we took, I believe there was some live ammunition that they were storing, and it's now been donated to the sheriff's department. We just need to be careful, because they got a letter stating that Commissioner Burbank, you're a city employee. You're not. You're an elected official like us up here. So we just, we need to get that under control, if we can, please.
Thank you.
All right. We're gonna move to city attorney comments. All right. We're gonna move to city manager comments.
Just to cover some issues that we've been working on for some time, and I won't go through all the background, but we did advertise and your approval tonight of the company to do the planning cleanup of our code and to identify the status of our infrastructure as it relates to transportation and other issues. In addition to that, in the consent agenda, we approved the contract for paving and res servicing all of our streets that we produced for you guys last, I think, last meeting. And this actually puts it into play, and we'll be moving forward with those contracts and related work orders associated with it. As you know, we have already been involved in the meter-reading exchange, and we have well over, probably 800 have been installed currently, and we're still engaged in that process. And we have a review of the bids associated with those for continuous effort at this time. I just touched a lot of things briefly, but there's a lot of work involved in all of these items, so you're gonna see a lot of different things in our community over the next few weeks start to change. You know, streets will be being prepared for res servicing, and some, there'll be some detours of traffic associated with that. That's kind of good news, because there's some roads that really need a lot of help, and I think you'll be pleased with the progress we make in that area. The most, probably labor-intensive area for staff and the consultant is the planning and development review process and procedure we're gonna go through. It'll have a number of public meetings associated with the effort. Not only public meetings, but if I remember right, there's some meetings where it's engaging the public actually into some of the elements. So it's our intent to involve everybody in the process and have everybody have a chance to illustrate their desires as it relates to the development code of the city. And some of the code is somewhat antiquated and contradictory, and we hope to clean that up at the same time. But I hope that, Commissioner, I hope, McCool, I hope that answers the questions that you wanted to put forward, and I'll be happy to expand on any of those that might be of interest.
Commissioner? Commissioner McCool?
That was somewhere else for a hot second. Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. It does. There were, with that also, I would just like former Rep. Commissioner shows his questions answered, whether you get with him at a time certain. He always brings up, you know, valid stuff, so if you could answer that as you investigate, because I will bring it back up. His comments are noted. He's usually very thorough, so if you could please get with him, that would be great.
Thank you. Is that it, Mr. City Manager?
That's all.
Okay. We're gonna go to Commissioner Burbank on Commissioner comments. Commissioner Vila Vasquez?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I just want to let everybody know, we had our comp stat meeting. We had a good report, considering a lot of the issues that we're having out there with traffic. The job fair was unbelievable. I was there, and it was really, really packed. And I also understand that there were people who were hired on site. I also want to give a shout out to everyone who put the community housing fair together this past Saturday. We were here. This room was packed with realtors, vendors, and a big shout out to our A-HAC board and the city staff, Angela, Don, and Eunice from Parks and Recs for really giving their all and being here till the end. But I also want to give a big shout out to Orange City Police Cadets and the Fire Department Cadets and the Boy Scouts that came out here and gave their all to help us put the event together and clean up afterwards. Just reminding everyone that Arbor Day is, let's see what day it is. Am I looking at the wrong calendar? Okay. Arbor Day is Friday, the 28th, from 11 to 1, right here in City Hall. And of course, the famous Bacon and Brew, which is also the 22nd of this month. And for, I know next week, we don't have a meeting, but I just want to remind our first responders that pasta night at the Sons and Doses of Italy is free to all our first responders. If you're with a uniform or bring your ID, families are $10. Children 12 and under are free. And I want to thank everybody for being here today, and have a good, safe trip home.
Thank you, Commissioner McCool.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank all of our residents that came out. Believe it or not, our numbers are growing as far as people attending, and I think feeling like you're being heard, so thank you. I'd like to tell you that I'm really proud to announce, too, that the chickens are on the way. We're revisiting our chicken ordinance as more and more of our neighbors get back to growing and being self-sustainable. The godmother and godfather of sustainability. I am proud they're sitting in the audience with us, Jim and Paula Pescia. Thank you for being great stewards of our community with the gardens, with your own example that you set for all of us to follow, because we just love you to pieces, and you're an integral part of that community. So thank you, guys, for being out here and coming and always showing up for the important stuff. Thank you very much. Also, I would also like to let you guys know that I have, there's, I'm doing a fundraiser, and this fundraiser is, as you all know, that I am battling cancer right now, and am starting to, and will be losing my hair, so I'm gonna go ahead and shave it off. And what I have done is doing a raffle, buy the ticket. Tickets are $10 to be the one to shave my head. And the point is, is this money goes to the Florida Cancer Specialist Foundation. It helps fund underfunded patients that can't afford a medicine, a visit, a procedure, wigs, or whatnot. So all of the money goes to that. There is a very tight accounting system that is done with this. You're feel free to look at the books. And I just want to make sure this is on May 1st. It's gonna be right out here in the courtyard. The campaign is called "May One More Be Saved", and the hopes is that this money will help somebody continue to be able to get the treatment that they desperately need. There is an online platform, if you would like to buy raffle tickets, but I also happen to conveniently bring tickets with me tonight, too, if you would like to participate. And the last thing that I want to say is that I have a very contentious, or have in the past had a very contentious and public at times been relationship with one of our commissioners, Commissioner Vasquez. But I want to tell you that she has been my savior this week. And I want to thank you publicly for that. You and I have fought a lot in public eye, but when it really counted, and that's what we do. So I just want to say that publicly also, and thank my commission and staff for being so wonderfully supportive. You know, this has been really hard, and I do this with you all, and your strength when I don't have it. So I want to say to my constituency also, that have been so incredibly supportive. Thank you. And I am really, I'm really grateful for all of your support, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McCool. Commissioner Caldwell? Just a reminder that the 21st of April is the deadline for spring flag for...
Just a reminder that the 21st of April is the deadline for spring flag football registration. Also, this Saturday is the mayor's fun run, which is a 5K. It's free, you don't have to pay anything to join. It's something to kind of promote, yeah, I'm going to do it, don't worry. It's to promote health within our community. And something I'm actually looking forward to is the Daddy Daughter Dance, which is going to be at the center on June 16th. So I'm actually looking forward to that a lot. And then finally, just a couple of things. Mr. Chisholm, can we make sure next time? I don't know why Marsha left, and, you know, maybe she's not feeling well, that's fine, but if we can make sure she lets us know, so we're not here, because I have a couple of things that I would like for her to look into, the golf courses contract. That thing is, I've never heard in my life of a contract that's forever. And if they're selling that property, we need to get out of that contract, because we're giving them over 3 million gallons of reclaimed water for free a month. So...
Mr. Mayor, just so I know, was this property that we leased or sold to the golf course?
They gave us it right away.
Glenn may know, I don't know. He's been here a while. Do you know if the golf course is something?
The golf? The golf course. That was back in the Deltona days, Deltona Corp days, they owned it to begin with. And when we, they built the wastewater plant, the first one at Fisher in the early '60s. And so then when, they were originally going to a different discharge point location, and then the reclaim rules came along, and we started sending them reclaim as Florida water back in the day. It was Deltona Corp and Southern State Utilities and Florida Water. So that contract was done, I believe, in the early to mid '80s, around, maybe even 1988. So it was well before the city became a city when that agreement was made.
Okay. Just because we sometimes shut off water to families that are in big-time need, and here we are giving, and I know it's reclaimed water, but 3 million gallons of reclaimed water should not be given to free for anyone, so if we can look into getting out of that contract, and if that needs to be a consent thing, then I think we can do a consent thing.
We probably need to look at it holistically on not only just the water park, but the proximity of it to our existing utilities and what we might be able to do.
Please, if we can, because this is an ongoing issue, let's make, let's fix it. All right. Meetings adjourned. Everybody have a great day.